All right, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tewksbury Tuesday, January 26, 2021. Our first scheduled item is to actually conduct an executive session related to collective bargaining, and we like to specify the reason for conveying executive session. It's Mass General Law, Chapter 39, 23B, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's bargaining or litigation position. With that being said, our meetings are still being conducted as virtual meetings because of the state emergency is still declared by the governor. So all votes will take a roll call vote, and that requires a roll call vote to enter into executive session. So with that being said, what is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to enter an executive session?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and I have a second, so we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Brian Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mike Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
And Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. So at this time, what we'll do is we'll enter executive session. Brian, if you could kill the feed, and what we'll do just for the residents is we'll conduct our executive session, we'll end our executive session, and we'll jump right, we'll just jump right into a regular session. So hopefully it doesn't take too long, but we don't know, so we will be back.[121.11]
All right, we just exit executive session, so now we're in the, um, we're out of executive session. So what we're going to do is, um, what, uh, jump to schedule items. So we have residents next. Brian, just because we got back live, I anticipate we don't have any residents on. However, um, if residents do join, just let us know and then we'll jump right back to the residence section. That's all.
Sure thing, Mr. Chairman.
All right, as far as new business, we have a constable application, Victor Von Seka. And I think Victor just joined us. How you doing, Vic? Uh, how you doing, Victor? We have Victor.
Hello.
I think Victor joined. Hey, Victor, we'll give you a second here after. So let's just, we'll talk through this as, as the board here and then we'll come right back to you, Victor. That's all. So just for the board, I saw all the paperwork. The application was thorough. The recommendations were sound, um, from, from different folks. So it was a very thorough application. Uh, I saw all the paperwork was in line. So at this point, I'd like to open up the board for questions, concerns, or, uh, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I would like to make a motion to approve Victor Von Seka's, um, constable license as submitted and thank him for putting such a complete document forward to us.
Oh, just second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion in a second. Okay, very good. Because we're virtual meeting again, we have to do a roll call vote. So Mr. Brian Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Krabman.
Aye.
Ms. Stronik.
Aye.
Ms. Wellman.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Congratulations, Victor, and thanks again, Victor, for helping out the community and like into Ms. Stronik's point. Very, very impressed with your resume and all your recommendations, my friend. Great job and thank you again.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Okay, awesome. All right, next order of business is general bylaw committee. I know someone on our, uh, board was anxiously awaiting this committee, so I think the time is now. So, um, I just want to highlight the committee just to, for the residents again, what the committee's all about. So let me just get there quickly. So this one is a general bylaw committee. Uh, in total, we're going to have five members. Wow, one will be the, one member will be, let me just get to the, uh, there'll be one member from the board of selectmen, four members at large appointed by the board. Um, and we'll also have the town clerk, town clerk and town manager will serve, but the non-voting, um, non-voting members. So we've already approved the committee, so I think tonight, what we'll do is, I think we already made the recommendation for someone on our board, but I'd like to just confirm that recommendation. So what's the pleasure of the board to nominate one of our board members to lead that committee?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm not, I'm not, I, I, in, um, not knowing, I can't remember a board member that we would like to...
Her last name was Wellman.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I figured. So I didn't want to speak on a term, but I'd like to make a motion to nominate Jane Wellman to the bylaw committee. The general bylaw committee.
I'll second that.
Secondly, Mr. Krabman, okay, um, roll call vote, Mr. Brian Dick.
Aye.
Mr. Krabman.
Aye.
Ms. Stronik. Ms. Wellman, are you sure?
Right, aye, thank you.
Okay, perfect, the chair votes aye as well, so five oh. Okay, very good. Now, as far as the members at large, uh, we, within our packets, we actually have four applications from, from residents to join in. So I don't know if we need to, um, if someone could help me just with the residents' names, I just, again, I just, I have the agenda up. So hopefully you had a chance to review all the different applicants, all the different residents that wanted to join. Um, I did know a couple of the folks, um, and they're very involved. So we can take them one name at a time, or, um, I think it was perfect that we actually got four applicants. Uh, and we have four, uh, members at large, so it worked out well. So what, what, what is the pleasure of the board? What direction should we take?
Chairman.
Please.
I am happy to nominate Alexandra Louder as a, uh, member of this committee. She is a very involved, um, participant in the town and, um, is extremely well-versed to this work. So I'm happy to make that as a recommendation and nominate her.
Second.
In the form of a motion.
Second. She's very enthusiastic.
Okay, awesome, awesome. Uh, how do you vote, Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Krabman.
Aye.
Ms. Stronik.
Aye.
Ms. Wellman.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Very good selection.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I'd also like to nominate, uh, Jason Christensen, um, who I also believe will be a valuable member to this, um, committee as well.
So agreed, so agreed. Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Brian Dick, roll call vote, Mr. Brian Dick.
Aye.
Mr. Krabman.
Aye.
Ms. Stronik.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well.
And Jane votes aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Wellman, five oh. Okay, thank you. Any other considerations?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation to, uh, nominate Dustin Ware to the committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, roll call vote, Mr. Brian Dick.
Aye.
Mr. Krabman.
Aye.
Ms. Stronik.
Aye.
Ms. Wellman.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well.
And Mr. Chairman, I have a, another person I'd like to nominate, Mr. George Ferdinand to this committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second for George Ferdinand. Roll call vote, Mr. Brian Dick.
Aye.
Mr. Krabman.
Aye.
Ms. Stronik.
Aye.
Ms. Wellman.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Now, as far as the dates, what we'll probably do, um, and Mr. Montori, I'll work through, through the office here. Typically, we'll, we'd, we'd start them up with all the other committee dates. Um, and I don't have the date, I don't have the end date for most committees and boards, but we'll try to line those up, synchronize those with, you know, the expirations on the, um, for the majority of the boards and committees. That's all.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Wellman, thanks again for taking us on. This is no, this is no easy task. Uh, it hasn't been done, I think, in nineteen years, um, or thereabout. So thank you very much for taking the lead and charge here, because this is a lot, a lot of heavy lifting. I always say, how do you, how do you eat an elephant one bite at a time? And this, this is an elephant, so, okay, cool.
Jane really know how to sell, let me tell you. It's good.
That needed to be done, so thanks again, everyone, on behalf of the board. Okay, uh, the next order of business is just a formality here. It's a record access officer, R A O, appointment for fire chief, uh, for Chief Kearns, as we recall. Um, uh, Chief Kearns got sworn in, I believe it was a month ago. So now, again, kind of a formality where we have, a department has our leaders, part of the records access officers. So with that being said, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve Chief Kearns as an R A O, um, uh, officer of records for the town of Tewksbury for the fire department.
Second.
Yeah, a second, a motion, I'll get, I'll take the second from, uh, Ms. Wellman. Roll call vote, Mr. Brian Dick.
Aye.
Mr. Krabman.
Aye.
Ms. Stronik.
Aye.
Ms. Wellman.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Um, Brian, before we jump to Mr. Montori's section, uh, any residents on the line?
We have no callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then why don't we go ahead and close down the residence section at this time, just to move forward. All right, Mr. Montori, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have just a few things. The first, I just wanted to provide the board with a brief update to COVID-19. Uh, a couple of things, a few things I want to cover. First, uh, the governor has made changes to his restrictions he put in place, uh, December twenty-sixth. Um, the mandatory closings, um, of nine-thirty for establishments has been lifted. Um, and that's for, uh, businesses such as restaurants, uh, liquor stores, indoor/outdoor events, movie theaters, youth and amateur sports. The nine-thirty restriction, uh, has now been lifted. The stay-at-home advisory from, I believe, ten a.m. to five a.m., was also lifted, uh, by the governor. Um, the, uh, restrictions that have, uh, kept and kept in place has been the twenty-five percent capacity, uh, limit, uh, restaurants and, uh, other, uh, facilities. Uh, gatherings are still, uh, ten for indoor and twenty-five for outdoor. So those have been kept in place, but as I mentioned earlier, uh, he did lift some of the restrictions that he had in place. Um, in addition, uh, vaccine information has continued to roll out from the Commonwealth. The, uh, public, uh, safety and first responders and dispatches in Tewksbury were, uh, provided, um, an opportunity to be vaccinated over the past couple of weeks. Uh, we had, um, many of our public safety offices and dispatches take advantage of the vaccine. Uh, the governor opened up the, uh, the, all of phase one to the remaining, uh, groups that were eligible within, um, phase one, such as caregiver care workers, uh, to be vaccinated. And we're now preparing to go into phase two. Phase two, um, is going to include our seniors, um, starting tomorrow. Uh, seniors, uh, age seventy-five plus can now, uh, register, uh, to be vaccinated at, um, public sites, uh, with the Commonwealth. Um, they can go online on the state website, uh, and begin to register and fill out a, um, attestation form, uh, to be completed, uh, and they'll, uh, be able to register at one of the public sites. Uh, and that's on mass.gov. The, uh, town will, uh, be involved in the distribution of vaccine. We just don't have a date yet when that will happen. Uh, we, it's an interesting situation. We applied for vaccine, uh, over a week ago to distribute to our seniors, uh, and individuals within the second phase. We initially applied for up to four thousand doses, because that's what we could store. Uh, there was no limit on what you could apply for. Things change daily, and today we were told that cities and towns will be given one hundred doses per week.
Yep.
You will not get your second group of a hundred doses until you use the first hundred doses you get. So as you use a hundred doses, you'll get a hundred doses. Uh, and you have to use them within a week's period of time or in a certain period of time. Um, so that does limit the amount we can give out, which, um, might be good, especially in the beginning, as we learn to, uh, to develop our distribution process. Uh, but we will be given a hundred doses per week. We haven't been told when. Uh, we'll notify, uh, residents when, uh, we will have them available and what the plan is to distribute those doses. Um, sign up will still be on the state's website, as all public, um, locations will be. Um, that's, that's the best way to handle it. Those seniors who do have access to a computer, uh, they'll be, uh, will have, uh, options for them to work through us, uh, at the senior center or, uh, other means, uh, making sure they get, um, they get registered. In addition to the, uh, public sites that are going to be, um, available, pharmacies in the area will also, um, be providing the vaccine. I know C V S will have a one-eight-hundred number people can access, uh, to, uh, register to get the vaccine, which will be helpful for those who can't access the computer. Uh, so there are going to be multiple, uh, sites, um, for, um, seniors, uh, in the next phase, uh, to, um, to, uh, to get the vaccine. Question's going to be how much vaccine's available to distribute, which now has been, uh, an issue for the Commonwealth. Uh, but at least the process for phase two is starting. I would encourage residents, um, to go to the state website, go to the town website, sign up for alerts, uh, so you'll be notified when vaccine is available. Uh, we're encouraging seniors to call the senior center, uh, to, uh, sign up for My Senior Center and get on the database through My Senior Center, so they will get, uh, alerts and robocalls when, um, the vaccine is available. Uh, we'll be putting something out on Facebook tomorrow, uh, in regard to the, uh, to the availability of, uh, um, vaccine to, uh, um, those seventy-five plus, uh, at the various public sites. Uh, we keep updating our own website in regard to vaccine information. So I can't stress enough, um, keep checking, uh, these websites, get on the alerts, uh, call us, uh, at the board, at the, uh, senior center, the manager's office, the, the Board of Health, if they have any questions. Uh, and we'll, um, we'll try to answer them. But what's important to note, as of today, we do not have any vaccine to give out. Um, and when we do, we'll let people know. But we will be limited. We also encourage people to call their own primary care physicians, uh, because they may have, uh, vaccine available or are planning through the hospital they work with. Uh, so that'll be helpful. Um, but, um, again, phase two will be starting, um, and, um, hopefully it goes smoothly and we can get the vaccine out to more people. Um, the other issue, the other item that came up, we did receive, um, um, an email or request, not even a request, but, uh, a physician locally reached out, said, uh, he would be happy to help, uh, distribute, uh, the vaccine, uh, with us if needed, which was great news. Uh, but, uh, we also received, I received an email today from Lowell General. I'll be on call later this week with, uh, other regional managers, uh, uh, with Lowell General, who will be setting up a site, uh, both regionally and maybe locally to, um, uh, distribute the vaccine. So that's, uh, good news. Lowell General's been extremely helpful to the communities, uh, in the first phase of the vaccine, uh, vaccinating our, uh, public safety personnel as needed. Uh, so, um, they will be a major player in the distribution of vaccine in, in this area. So I look forward to hearing what their plans are. So I think we're on top of it as best we can. Uh, we're getting the information out as best we can, um, and hopefully it's successful. But again, we continue to ask people to be patient, uh, with us, since we're getting, um, information daily and the information does change. So that's the vaccine. Any questions on that?
Ms. Wellman.
Go ahead, Ms. Stronk.
Nope, you can go first.
Oh, thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Montori, I appreciate that you were giving this update. It's, um, it turned out to be very timely. I know that the, um, situation is shifting for towns under your feet, almost hourly, um, in the last couple of days, uh, with regard to vaccines. So, um, I'm living it in my day job and I totally understand it. Um, and how, how frustrating it is to plan, to try and plan something when the plans change. To your point, um, about the amount of vaccine that's going to be available to towns on a weekly basis. Um, it will take the better part of the year to vaccinate all our seniors at that rate, if it's to be maintained at that. If that is untenable. So hopefully the supply will increase over time. But, um, how are you for staffing, uh, for your, your council on aging to answer those calls? I imagine you're getting a lot of calls right now and those, that becomes the priority. And so I just wanted to know how you are with staffing, um, for that. And then, um, I imagine with small-scale clinics, it'll be a little easier to manage. Um, it'll be more like a flu clinic size, and that's something that, uh, we have more experience doing routinely. But, um, just an update on that much would be great.
Sure. Sure, and, and that was a good comparison, that the flu clinic, the size of this will be similar to a flu clinic, so that hopefully will be more manageable. Um, the calls have been, it was, it, once the governor made the announcement, yes, he, the calls just started flowing in, so. And, uh, I haven't found out who it is yet, but a lot of the calls were directed to my extension. So, um, it was, uh, it was, uh, an interesting couple of days, but, you know, the seniors have been great. They've been understanding when we explain the situation and thankful for providing the information. But the senior center being closed, uh, you know, they have the staff there to handle the calls right now.
Okay.
If it does get, uh, too heavy, we'll, we'll provide them additional staffing if needed. Uh, but right now, uh, they have enough people there to handle the calls and, um, calls are going to the Board of Health, so between the two of them, they seem to be handling it okay. I'm hoping, um, they kind of drop off a little bit after the governor made his announcement. We saw that surge, now tomorrow they can get on the website, um, and, uh, start registering. So hopefully we see a decline in the calls, but, uh, you know, again, we're encouraging people, if they have questions, call us. We don't want anybody to feel like, uh, they have a question that's not answered.
Yeah, I think that's important, definitely keeping the, the communication lines open, because, um, it's challenging to, with Board of Health folks working on contact tracing and everything else, that the state's relying on, uh, distributed public health system. All the towns have public health departments, but we don't have the staffing to do this level of work, this sustained for so long. So it's something that I'm, that's why I asked about it, and I appreciate your candidness. Thank you.
Ms. Stronik.
Um, thank you, excellent questions, I appreciate that, uh, Ms. Wellman. Um, Mr. Montori, I'm really, um, focused on the first responders who have already gotten it. I think it's important to note to our residents that those first responders who are out working in our community have received their first dose. Have they received their second dose yet? Have they haven't got to their thirty days yet, or they have?
No, they have not received their second dose yet. They'll go in another couple of weeks.
Okay. So, um, and we were fortunate to get a good response from our, um, first responders, and I want to thank them for that, because, um, that was, that has not been the case in every community. So I really appreciate, um, that they've stepped up in that manner to do that.
Yeah, we, we were fortunate, and, um, even some that, uh, initially didn't get, uh, go to the, uh, clinic in Chelmsford, uh, have gone to Lowell General, and Lowell General's been accommodating.
That's terrific. Okay, that's all I have. I just wanted to check in on that second dose, I appreciate that. I also want to thank Chelmsford for setting up the regional office to support our community, along with the four other communities in the, um, area that they, uh, supported. And that gave way for us to say, we can do this too. So I appreciate our public health department stepping up. And is it a viable option for, um, individuals to go to the library to use their online system? Is there someone that we could have there to maybe help residents who don't have access to a computer or who don't have, um, you know, uh, the level of technical skills that they may need to be patient with that system?
That's absolutely an option. Um, we just need to work out the, um, because of the, the library being open, that's absolutely an option. We just need to, uh, work with the, uh, director to, to just educate the staff there and where people need to go to sign up.
That'd be, that'd be really helpful. And lastly, if we could, um, on the message board, just remind people of the state's website, because I said, everybody thinks it's the individual town. So maybe if we put that on the, uh, message board, not necessarily that people could take a picture of it at the light if they needed it, but just as kind of the phone calls and the floods, um, to the health department would be somewhat problematic, as they try to maintain all the systems to Ms. Wellman's point about staffing.
We could try to sell them tomorrow, something simple.
That would be fantastic. And, um, appreciate everyone's work on this. And I just want to remind everybody that, um, while the vaccine is here, and I am very excited about that, we still have a long way to go before we're out of the woods on, um, having to deal with this. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, Mr. Montori, oh, Mr. Krabman.
Yes, uh, Richard, um, one of the things, I, I did see that we put a, a message out about the vaccine on our message board today, uh, actually it was yesterday. Uh, we put something out there on the town website. Um, is there a way, we're coming down to the end, and I know we've been putting out a lot of information, but unfortunately, when we put out all of this information, it kind of gets buried in the town website. Um, so when you look on the town website, because it was sent out and we sent out a number of, blasted out after that, um, we have a link in there, everything you need to know about COVID. Um, but, and we also have a, the library puts out information, the police department puts out the information, the school committee puts out the information. This is so important, I think we need to coordinate all our resources to make sure this runs smoothly. There's going to be a lot of people with questions, where they can go, where they can go safely, and how this can work together. And if we're ever going to work together jointly, this is the time. Um, and, you know, I went onto the town website today to kind of try to find out where that was, and I had a look around for it. Um, I found it, it wasn't that difficult, but, you know, I, we're going to keep putting additional stuff on the website each day. So it's going to get a little bit further down. So I think, um, if we can have somebody work on that and put it underneath that COVID site, I think that's the first place anybody's going to kind of look. If they're saying anything about COVID, obviously the vaccine should be underneath there. Uh, right now it isn't. Uh, but I know, like I said, the police are constantly putting out posts, we have the, as, uh, my colleague, Ms. Stronik posted out, we have the town message board, you know, we should use all our resources to get this information out as it becomes available. I know I've received a number of calls, some people asking about it, and I said, you know, go to the town website. I just want to make sure, when they do, uh, you know, they're not just calling town hall and saying, I mean, we obviously welcome people to call, but they should be able to find it easy without, uh, you know, what else. So I think we need a little bit of work on that. And, uh, maybe some, since we're going to be talking to the library anyway, they have a large list that they send their, their log out to. So maybe using some of their resources as well, when we're sending out this information and let everybody be aware of what's happening in that town.
Okay, we can make them more prominent.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, back to you, Mr. Montori.
Um, just finally, uh, so I covered the vaccine and, uh, the restrictions that have been lifted. Uh, the only other, um, item I want to touch upon was, um, the funding, the CARES Act, uh, that we've been, uh, utilizing. So, um, the town, uh, early on in the pandemic was, um, allocated, uh, two mil, two-point-seven million dollars in CARES Act to be used to, um, help, uh, uh, help with the costs caused by the pandemic. Um, the schools, uh, received, in addition to the two-point-seven, the schools received approximately a million dollars of, uh, funding, uh, for their use. Um, there've been some smaller grants, um, that we've, uh, applied for throughout the, uh, um, since, since March. Um, the health departments received some funding, um, for, uh, uh, staffing, uh, which we've used for nurses. Um, the, uh, uh, senior center, uh, received some funding for outreach, uh, that we utilized. Um, but the big, um, the big grants, the big, uh, funding allotments, uh, to both the town and the school, uh, was through the CARES Act. So far, we've received, uh, we have sought reimbursement from the CARES Act, uh, and the amount's about two-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars. Uh, the schools haven't, uh, submitted their first reimbursement yet. Uh, they're working on that as we speak. We have another, we also have funding that we can access through FEMA. FEMA will pay up to 75% of eligible costs. Whatever is not eligible or whatever percentage is not funded, we can actually go to the CARES Act for the remainder. We have about $278,000 in reimbursements. Within a request that was already sent to FEMA and we're waiting to hear from them. Once we find out how much they'll fund. We will take the balance that's not funded and put it in our next CARES Act reimbursement. We should be sending it to CARES Act reimbursement, our third CARES Act reimbursement in sometime in the next couple of weeks. Most likely it's going to include. All the costs that we've incurred up through December 31st that we haven't seen, that we haven't sought reimbursement for yet. It's going to include costs such as overtime in our public safety departments, staffing for the board of health. Beyond what they could fund from the small grants they received. Any other PPE or. Equipment that we've purchased or improvements that we've made to facilities. To keep both residents and staff safe. So we're putting all that together for our next reimbursement. The schools will be preparing a reimbursement for. Similar type items, but in addition, they'll be seeking a reimbursement for Chromebooks that they purchased for students. That's probably about $475,000 worth of costs. So we've been meeting as a group, the business manager, myself, town accountant, DPW director and one of the project managers who's. Overseeing the actual reimbursement request for us. So we'll be putting together probably a large reimbursement over the next couple of weeks. For, for our next CARES Act submission. We're, you know, we're also obviously being cautious because we still have a ways to go with some of the potential costs. Some of the potential costs that we're anticipating if the school department does. Move towards pool testing of students and. The staff. The state will fund up to the first six weeks of that pool testing. Of students and staff. But after that, the town would have to fund that and it's approximately $20,000 per week. So we want to make sure we have funding for that. If that's a successful program, we want to move forward with. You know, we, we talked today and we had to remind ourselves that. You know, this is still a long way away from being over and we're dealing with not just this school year, but we need to make sure we're ready for next school year. So we don't want to spend all of our money. Without understanding what we might need going into next year too. So. We have sought reimbursement, we receive reimbursement, we have requests in for reimbursement. And we have other reimbursements that we're going to be submitting. So. Right now, before we provide our next reimbursement, we have about $2.5 million on the town side for. For CARES and as I mentioned, the schools have a million dollars. That's it. Any questions on the funding?
Good here. Great work.
Mr. Chairman, if you would, could I ask the town manager a couple of questions?
Please.
So Richard, I know we've discussed this. You know, we got a new world of what's happening and what's. You know, hopefully we're going to have reopening of some activities shortly. And I know a number of the. The businesses have been, have been told that they had changed the way their restaurants and works were done. And I'm thinking the senior center, our kitchen and how they're going to be operating. I think a lot of things like cutting stations and things. I know they have an operation down there. Has that been reviewed to see? What needs to be done? So when the senior center opens that they have the safety and things have been replaced and removed and. They have the, they have full access to the senior center when it's ready?
Yeah. So we, we, we need to do a further review of the senior center because no guidelines have come out yet on. The reopening of senior centers, we, we focused in other areas, but. We've done some improve, we've undertaken some improvements down there for. For safety measures, but we have not gone into the kitchen yet, Mark, which we need to, as well as other larger areas down there.
Also with that, with that, to that point, I know we took a walk and we toured the. Livingston Street and looked at some of the facilities down there and what's going on. And you know, we obviously made some upgrades. Down there, but you know. Funding to when the parks open up, obviously hand washing. Is the number one priority when people say to keep the germs off of you. And we really only have photo parties down there. And, you know, hand washing statements or opening the bathrooms down there and doing, or at least having some sort of hand washing statement, stations near. The playground or something down there, the type of improvements so that when kids are playing, they can go and wash their hands and. People are sharing equipment, sharing toys, sharing those things. I think that should be looked at as well. So that people are safe when they're going down there and then, you know, we want kids to get out and get some fresh air. And, you know, those types of improvements definitely would be beneficial to the community.
That's a good idea.
And I know there was a story recently about one of the cities and towns that was. Reimbursing restaurants for. Under the CARES Act. For the waiving of fees. And there was a story on that, but we looked into it. Is it? Have we found out how they were able to do it?
I haven't found out how they were able to do it, but I did follow up to see through the, through the Department of Revenue if that was an eligible reimbursement. They told me no. But I'm not sure how that particular municipality. Went about doing it. And the story wasn't clear whether they actually were reimbursed or we're going to try to seek reimbursement. Very different.
Okay, because I, I know we tabled that in our last conversation. And, you know, we're trying to get move forward and, you know, we were trying to see what funding was coming out and I'm hoping that we can help these. Businesses get through this. We're getting to the end stages. But I would like to bring that up with discussion again, maybe at meeting to see what we can do to. Help the businesses get through this and move forward to a complete reopening. I know it's encouraging news we've heard recently. But everybody's still at 25% and, you know, it looks like it's going to be that way for just a little bit longer. And I want to make sure that the businesses that we have remaining remain open. So. If we can look into that and see if that is a feasibility for us to do it. If that funding to do it, that'd be great. If not, we can look at other ways. We can bring it up in a conversation. But that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Montori, what's? What's next on your agenda?
So on that. So the next item I had was. The e-billboard host agreements and special permits that was provided to the board. It's in the packet. This is for the billboard that the board approved. At a previous meeting, the board. Asked myself and the chairman to negotiate the host agreement, which we have done. And has been included in the packet. The assistant town manager, Steve Savick, has drawn up the special permit for the board to approve. So based on the host agreement that's been reviewed by town council. That's negotiated by the chair and I, the special permit, that reflects what the board voted on at, at a previous meeting. I would recommend the board approve the host agreement. As well as approve the special permits.
Yeah, just maybe for some color for the board and for residents, we can, I can tell you, it was a pretty tough negotiation. We did go, I'm going to say back and forth. At the end of the day, we kind of landed, landed where we started, so to speak. But the representatives did show us that the agreement, the host agreement was very similar to that of other towns and other communities. And at the end of the day, if they went any higher, the profitability, you know, was almost not worth their while. So. You know, we always try to get the most for our town and our community, but at the end of the day, we're still happy with the, you know, with the numbers. Mr. Montori, can you just do a quick summary maybe for the residents as far as what we flatlined on for the numbers?
So for the numbers, we will receive $50,000, $25,000 per ace. So $50,000 per year at a minimum for, within the host agreement. And then in addition. We will receive 15% of the net annual revenue that is above the $50,000 per year. So. The minimum is $50,000, but we could receive more if it goes, if it goes above. 15% of the, the net, if the 15% of the net annual revenue is above that. So that was, that was good. The total over the life of the contract or the host agreement, which is 25 years is one, is a minimum of $1,250,000. The original proposal by the applicant was a 40-year. Agreement, but we wanted something less. So it's 25 years. And if they want to renew, they have to go back to the board to select them. So that's really the gist of the agreement. The town will receive. Allotted period of time to use for. Announcements, I believe up to five hours per month. Which will be good for us for any public announcements or items we want to place on the board that are town related. Whether they are alerts, road construction, weather emergencies, things like that. So that was another added benefit. And that's really the gist of the, the host agreement.
Okay, and I just had a few, few questions, I guess, maybe informative questions, but residents did, you know, they kind of asked, what is the order of operation? And so, you know, we're at the final stages here to either accept or not accept this agreement, you know, based on tonight's vote. Mr. Montori, what, what would be? What would next? Let's say, you know, if, if we do happen to agree, we go back to the clients. And, you know, cross the Ts and dots the Is. I guess the question is, I don't want to put the cop before the horse. However, I know a lot of residents were asking, where does the revenues go? So let's say, you know, we, we, we agree, we'll go with the number. Ideally, would the, would the revenues go in the general budget and we would need some type of amendment, if you would, at town meeting? To potentially allocate those dollars, let's say to a different budget. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah. So any revenue, so the next step would be if the board approves everything tonight. The board will sign the documents, will send them back to the applicant. The applicant still needs to go through the state for a state permit. So they have a little bit of ways to go. And then revenue doesn't start coming to the town until the billboard is actually operational, 30 days after the billboard's operational. So that gives the board a little bit of time to determine what they want to do with any of the funding that comes in from the host agreement. If you do nothing or specify, don't have any specific area you want to target. It would go into the general fund and just be general fund revenue on an annual basis. But if the board is interested in targeting the revenue, revenue to a specific purpose. We should discuss that over the next couple of weeks and we can develop a draft warrant article for town meeting. In earmark that revenue to go to a very specific source, if you'd like to do that.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to share that with the board because I think we're all getting inundated with questions in a good way. It's exciting, you know, a little, little form of revenue coming into the town. So. All right, that's all I had. Any questions for Mr. Montori? Questions, comments?
I just, Mr. Chairman, I just would like to thank you and Mr. Montori for negotiating this contract. I think it's a good one for the town. And I know it was a couple of times back and forth. So I appreciate the flexibility in getting this done. And getting it presented to the board tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Likewise, I'd like to thank you guys for the work that went into this. I, we, we made some requests. Previously, and I think it's great. The revenue calculation is different with this additional 15% on their net revenue. Like, I was curious how that was going to be. They're going to give you a financial report quarterly and you'll be able to verify those numbers and then they'll pay annually. Okay. The end of the year.
So there is, there is a reporting mechanism in the host agreement that they'll need to abide by and. We'll review them and if we need to have somewhat more, more expertise to do it, we'll have that done too.
Sure. And then I'm glad that you included information, you know, a time, an amount of hours that would be discreet. That the town could use and that we would be, that would be set aside for the town so that we could make sure that we use that occasionally for emergencies, certainly. But then there'll be other opportunities for the town. I think that's a, a nice selling point for the town. And then keeping the term to 25 years, I think it's good. Having us locked into a 40-year term was a concern mine. Without opportunity for renegotiation. So having this in there gives us an opportunity and doesn't promise us for multiple generations. On this contract. I think it's a really good contract. I, I think it's excited for what it. Brings to the town. And to your point, Mr. Chairman, I think we should have conversations about potentially. Setting aside these monies, the revenues from this for particular purposes and creating a, a structure for that. And we can. You can think about how we want to do that. There's been conversation in the past about doing that with a. Sidewalk funding or something along those lines. So we would maybe create a. Have to create a fund or something at town meeting. So I would be interested in seeing what the rest of the board's interested in doing with those funds. But thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Montori for your work on this.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? Or what is the, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the host agreement as presented. I'll do a second on that, Mr. Chairman.
If motion second, roll call vote, Mr. Brian Dick.
That'll be an aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronic?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. I guess before we conclude, I do want to thank Mr. Kratman, Mr. Kratman and Mr. Brian Dick. I know you guys were, have been involved here for quite some time. Framing this up with Mr. Montori, Mr. Savick. So thank, thank you gentlemen. Great job and hopefully this works out at the end. Okay.
Can we get a vote on the special permit also?
I'm sorry, one more time on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's, that's required. Okay, very good. All right. So this is separate than the host agreement. Okay. So I have a motion and I have a second on the special permit. Roll call vote, Mr. Brian Dick.
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronic?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Montori, what's next?
I have town council invoices, but just quickly, I'll leave those documents out for the board to sign. They'll be left out starting tomorrow. So if you can sign them over the next few days. I have two invoices for town council to get approved. The first is for November 16th through November 30th in the amount of $1,232.50 and I would recommend approval.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Ms. Tronic. Roll call vote, Mr. Brian Dick.
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronic?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well.
And then a second invoice covering December 1st through December 30th in the amount of $3,187.50. I would recommend approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Tronic, second by Ms. Wellman. Mr. Brian Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman? Ms. Tronic?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Anything else, Mr. Montori, on your side?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
All right. Great updates this week as usual. Thank you very much. All right. Brings us to minutes. What do we have, Ms. Tronic?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I would like to just say that. I apologize for these minutes being a little bit delayed and I appreciate the work of Melissa. Very much putting these together. And with that, I would like to present July 15th regular session, August 11th regular session. And October 20th regular session for your approval. And make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. That's fine. We'll do a wholesale, wholesale approvals. So I have a motion and I have a second. Mr. Brian Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronic?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Ms. Tronic, and thank you to Melissa as well. Please.
I would like to note for the record that due to personal commitments. Melissa will not be able to continue her work with us as the secretary of this board. While I am disappointed, I completely understand she has been stellar. Work, working with us and her minutes have been very detailed. I want to thank her for her. very detailed. I want to thank her for her service. And I want to remind people if they are interested, they can. Has it been posted yet, Mr. Montori?
Yes, it has been.
They can apply online at our website. And anybody who is interested in doing that, we would appreciate it. So I just want to mention that and thank her for all her work. It's been many years that she's been doing this, so.
Great call, Ms. Tronik. Thank you. All right, it brings us to board member reports. How about Mr. Brian Dick?
Mr. Chairman, nothing to report other than I just wanted to make a quick, quick comment that, you know, the last couple of couple of week, couple of months, I've been working about a second term for the selectmen. And I'm going to announce, I've talked to the chairman and also Mr. Montori. I'm not going to run for a second term. So I just wanted to get that out to my fellow board members. And just put it on the record for the town of Tewksbury. So, you know, I've had a couple of family events. My daughter's getting engaged and my business is growing. So and some other personal projects that I'm getting pulled into. So I'm going to step aside, let some others jump in. Anne Marie, I'm going to step aside, let some others jump in. And I think new faces and new ideas for Tewksbury is a good thing. So I just want to say, say that, get down the record. So other people can jump into the race. And I'm sure I'll say some thank yous down the road. We don't have to get into it. But I just want to let you know. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
So I was going to say, Mr. Brian Dick, we'll we'll we have a few more meetings to do some celebration and maybe shed a tear or two. But but all good. Okay. But thank you for the announcement. Very good. How about Mr. Kratman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The economic development committee met last Wednesday with the Wednesday before that. We had some very spirited conversations about things and ideas of how we can help businesses in the community. We discussed a community map, working with some students in the community, working with Shawshank Tech and UMass Lowell, trying to get some engineering work, as well as help from a town manager, assistant town manager, and our engineering and DPW departments. There was a lot of discussion on businesses struggling. There was a lot of business discussion about how to bring in new businesses. And there was a lot of group discussion about new businesses that have come to the community. And there's a lot of encouraging news that's going on, and we want to keep it moving forward. So that was very exciting. They did bring up some of the questions about the other communities, helping the small businesses. And I said that the selectmen were still in talks discussing that. And, you know, we can bring that up at our future meeting. The Lowell Regional Transit Board is meeting this Thursday. I'll be at that meeting. And that's pretty much all we have right now. But I just want to thank the town manager for his assistance because my committee has asked for a lot of information, specifically revenue information and other things that even during these COVID times and things, there's a lot of questions and about, as you can see through our budget, you know, obviously, revenue was been a strong coming through. And we're trying to figure a way how to we can help the town increase that revenue so the residents aren't paying as many taxes and help the small businesses thrive and keep paying to the town. So I think it's we've got a good team, and I want to thank everybody on the team that's working to help the community. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kratman, I'll just say I did watch that meeting. It was a very good meeting. And like we said, as a collective board, you know, we want to see how some of the the second round of the stimulus was going to be sent and how a business may or may not apply that, you know, to whatever portion of their business or expenses. And like we said, as a board, if if any of the board member wants to put it on the agenda for our next meeting or our future meeting, let's put it on the agenda and let's discuss what we can do. That was the commitment of this board. And, you know, I know we're still trying to look left and look right to see what we can do. So again, Mr. Kratman, if we, based on your conversations with your committee, that might trigger us to put it back on the agenda to get creative in any way, shape, or form. So I thank you and the committee for, you know, looking at different avenues to help our small businesses out.
And Mr. Mr. Chairman, to that point, I did tell them that we are working together as a board. You know, everybody's on the same page. We have a great selectmen board right now. And it seems like everybody's on the same page to try to help everybody. And we are still trying to get more information because it's it's a changing, there's different funding that's out there. There's different grants that come available every week. And then we're seeing while other cities and towns are acting around us as well. And I did say that we, you know, we're looking at it wisely. We got to look at the bottom number. We got to, you know, what we vote, you know, residents pockets as well and how we're doing that. So I did express that feeling to them, and they understood. So thank you for your assistance.
Very good balance, very good balance. All right, how about Ms. Tronik?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of updates to report. One, the elementary building committee meeting, I have reported that previously at our other meeting. But we did hit a milestone between meetings where we raised the last piece of steel last Wednesday on January 20. So that's pretty exciting for us. Our next meeting of that committee is on February 11 at 6:00 PM. That will be virtual as well. And then the local will be our next meeting. So getting back on track with trying to create some opportunities for the affordable housing within the community. And I want to thank the town manager and the assistant town manager, as well as the chairman, Nancy Reed, who has been working to see how we can engage with some type of external resource, whether that be NIMCOG or regional organization, to help us move that agenda item forward, as it is a pretty daunting task. We may need some additional assistance in getting some work across the finish line on that. So we're pretty excited about that. I'll keep you posted on what happens on the February 16 meeting and look forward to giving you updates then. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing else.
All right, very good. How about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Tronik, it's interesting that you mentioned that because NIMCOG talked about this at our last meeting. And there's an effort, as you may know, with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission to do a series of webinars on housing. And so the council voted to recommend slash request that there is a technical webinar that's geared toward staff and elected and appointed officials. And then there's one that's more for the public to explain what what the housing situation is, what the laws are, how they've changed very recently with regard to approvals and stuff. So it's a lot. There's a lot of jargon. There's a lot of technicality. And so that that particular presentation would be helping residents break it down and have a better understanding. And so we'll, once that is put together, we'll work with the town and housing authority, you know, promote that everywhere. So folks can go and and learn more about what's the situation. So.
I think it's my fault you called it the housing authority. It is the local housing partnership.
Partnership. Thank you.
No, I think I do that as well. So I didn't know if that was my bad. So I want to make sure that my committee members are at least calling it correctly. So.
I appreciate the correction. Thank you.
I dated too.
It's it's getting late, and it's been a long, it's been a long weekend. It's Tuesday. It's like been three weeks this week already. So I thought it was an interesting thing to bring up. And then there's a new, the state and the NIMCOG talked about a new unified grant portal. It'll make it easier for cities and towns to apply for grants. So that's a good thing. I attended the MMA conference last week, and the lieutenant governor announced a 3.5% increase in local aid. And so I hope that actually that number sticks. That would be great. And the governor also announced this $200 million transportation bill again that was once a one off, and that seems to be coming back annually. The beautification committee is meeting tomorrow night, and so we'll do some work there. I'm hosting office hours virtually on Thursday night from 6:30 to 7:30. I've posted stuff on my social media pages. And so folks can email me and get the the link and join in on that if they want to, so you can answer some questions. I wanted to say congratulations to our first woman vice president, Kamala Harris. I know she watches our meetings a lot. She's very involved in Tewksbury politics. So I thought that was a great thing. It was fun to watch the inauguration with my kids. And then I wanted to request in a future agenda item that we bring back the human resource, Human Relations Advisory Committee, or you can recall it, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, or something like that. But I think we need to take it up as a board soon to talk about progress on that mission statement and get some feedback from the public by posting it on our website. So I would hope that we can bring that back at a future meeting. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, yeah, we'll pencil it in for the for the ninth, February 9 is our next meeting. I know we're doing some homework. We have some homework to do behind the scenes. So we'll bring that to next meeting's agenda. And I think I don't have anything on my side. The reuse committee is going to meet next week. So I'll have an update during our February 9 meeting. So with that being said, I'd look for a motion to adjourn. Actually, actually, Mr. Montori?
You're muted, Mr. Montori.
Sorry about that. There's one thing I meant to bring up during the COVID update, and it was one of the more important things, and I forgot. I apologize. The website has been changed in regard to the way we're presenting our case numbers. The chart that we had on before and the information from the state has been reduced, more streamlined. The we've been having, it's difficult to pull numbers from the state's Maven system where all the data resides for our cases. And a lot of times, the Maven system is not cleaned out. And what I mean by cleaned up or cleaned out, a lot of times, it's not cross referenced with the data from the community tracing collaborative. So when we go into the Maven system, a lot of times, we don't know if cases are recovered or if they're still in isolation or if they're active. So we are now going to start reporting in a more simplified way. But we believe a more accurate way of the total cases since the pandemic's onset, the number of deaths since the pandemic onset, the number of deaths from the previous week, the current active cases in the community, and an increase or decrease in the previous week. We're going to use a 10 10 day period, which is the infectious period of anybody that tests positive for COVID. We're not going to do it on a given day because when you do it on a given day, we're not sure the data is clean. So that's why we're looking at a 10 day period, infection period. And we're going to post on the website the previous month and the current month's data from the state's public health daily weekly report. And we think this is more streamlined, easier to follow for residents. And we encourage people to go to the state's dashboard for any further information in regard to cases. So I just wanted to bring that up as people go to the website to to review the town's case numbers. And if they have any questions, obviously, they can contact myself or the health department. And as mentioned earlier, and as brought up in select my crap, and we're going to make the vaccine the more prominent item on the website going forward. That's it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Montori. Okay, with that being said, look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
A motion to have a second final roll call vote of the night. Mr. Brian Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much. Good, very good meeting. Thank you.